This time I'll call the meeting to order. We have four of the members present which established as a quorum. Mr. Norther is not able to be with us today. At this time, I'm going to ask Commissioner Terman to give the invitation and then we'll have the pledge allegiance in all places.
Our heavenly Father, we're thankful for the blessings that you bestowed upon us and we're thankful, God, for this opportunity we have to serve the people of Covington County. And I pray that you'll just guide our thoughts and our intentions today and may they be according to your will in heaven. And I pray, God, you continue to bless our county, bless our people, bless those that are in attendance today, God, we pray. And thank you, Lord, for them being interested in the county's business. And we pray now for your touch upon us, each one of us, in Jesus' name, amen.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation of God and God invisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone here today. We thank you for your interest in your government. We thank the news media for covering the actions of the commission so that the public can be informed. At this time, I will ask for a motion to adopt the official agenda.
I so move, Chairman.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Motion, all opposed, nay, there being none, motion carried unanimously. At this time, we are going to hear from Ms. Janice Hart, our revenue commissioner, to present the abhorrent tax final settlement report. Ms. Hart?
Well, what I need you to do is to approve it. We met last week and we were three cent out, so we thought we did a pretty good job this year. Our litigations was eighteen hundred fifty-two dollars and eighty-two cents. This is the state's portion that we're asking you to approve. The insolvents was seven thousand one twenty-two thirty. So that's where we're at. I'd like to say that last year overall, I think, yep, pardon my paperwork on my desk, but our overall collections was ten million six hundred and fifty-three thousand six hundred and forty-three dollars and eighty cents. The county's portion of that was three million six hundred and sixty dollars, six dollars and ninety-three cents. So what I need is an approval on that where we can complete our year.
Do I have a motion we approve?
I make a motion we approve. Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay, there being none, motion carried unanimously. As a comment, we had changed the meeting. Ms. Hart, are you through?
I am, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hart.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry. We had to change the meeting from last week to this week because of two commissioners being absent. Our agenda is a little bit change in order because there were certain things that we needed to get done today and we was going to have public comments that might be extensive, so we wanted to be sure that we got through in time. So at this time, we're going to take up the agreement between Covington County, the City of Op and Covington Electric Cooperative, and Alabama Aerospace Manufacturing, and Georgia Aerospace Defense Manufacturing. As you know, in a previous meeting, we approved a resolution that we would participate in this endeavor. I'm going to ask Mr. Rick Clifton, the director of the Covington County Economic Development Commission, to address.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. As you recall and the chairman mentioned, we met not too long ago and approved a memorandum of understanding between the entities and the new business that's going to be relocating into Op. We have finalized that agreement into a final project agreement. I've sent it along to the county administrator and to attorney for their review. Everyone has reviewed it and tentatively approved it. Covington Electric has finalized their part of the agreement and has transferred their funds to us to use for the relocation. Op approved it yesterday, the final agreement. And what I was asked for today is the final approval from the commission to, so we can get these folks over here. They're straining it a bit. They're holding off on ordering equipment for us to finalize our agreements. And they're excited about coming and we're excited about having them. And I would ask the commission to approve the final agreement, the final project agreement at this time.
Do I have a motion to approve the final project?
I so move. Second.
Any comments?
Looking forward to having them.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay, there being none, motion carried. And I assume that we need to remit a check as soon as possible so they can begin to move.
Thank you very much.
Hopefully, we can get that this week. Next item is consider memorandum of understanding for Covington County Water Authority for the community development grant application. We have previous action on this. Do I have a motion that we approve this agreement of understanding?
I make a motion, Chairman, we approve this agreement.
Second. Any comments? All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, nay, there being none, motion carried unanimously. Next item is consider agreement for sewer acceptance for the Covington County jail. I don't see the architect here, but what it was, they wanted us to install a similar to a septic tank that collects all the solids that does not go down so it be periodically cleaned out at eye call. So we'll have to, before we can proceed with construction of the jail, we need this agreement.
I make a motion that we accept this agreement.
Mr. Albritton needs to address that, if y'all don't mind.
If y'all don't mind. The, you know, the city's, or the utility board's concern in all of this was that they're afraid that solids may get dumped into the system and they wanted an agreement in place that sets up certain requirements to try to prevent damage to their system. There's a provision in there that says that if the county does anything that damages the system, that the county will have to reimburse the city for all costs associated with correcting that, which certainly seems reasonable to me. That paragraph four point three, I think, needs a little bit of explaining. And I've talked with John Thompson about that and I told him that I would like some clarity to that provision, mainly on the issue of what we do if there's a disagreement about whether it's our problem or not. And so what I'd like to ask you to do is to approve the contract, subject to an agreement with the city that further explains the provisions of paragraph four point three. And then, once he and I can get a little bit more definition in that paragraph, I think we'll be good to go. Otherwise, I think it's fine. Does that make any kind of sense?
Yes. I make a motion, we approve this.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, nay, there being none, motion carried unanimously. Next item is consider resolution supporting forever while proposal. We're going to move that down to later on. There are some individuals who wish to address this and one of them is not here yet, having to travel from out of town. So with consent of the commission, we'll move on down to public comments from citizens. This time, we're here from Ms. Cooper Davis of the Children's Rehabilitation Services for the proposal regarding Family and Resource Center. Is she here? Ms. Sala, is she? Okay. Well, that being the case, we'll just move Ms. Sala and let her do address on that behalf right now. That's number four.
I'm sorry. I meant to put that on vibrator.
Good morning. Thank you for having us here today. I also have Grace Jeter, who's with our district attorney's office. And I believe you were given some information regarding the child advocacy centers in your packet. And I just wanted to give you a brief overview because I know you have a full agenda and then take any questions if you have them for us. The Child Advocacy Center is a child-focused center that allows child sexual abuse and severe physical abuse children to be able to go to one place where we can serve them as a multidisciplinary team. It's a child-friendly facility, a place that, as a nation, we've recognized is the best practice for investigating child abuse cases. Here in Covington County, prior to our recent efforts, we have utilized the center in the Dethin area and we were able to send ten to fifteen children there a year for forensic interviews and services through that center. Since then, we've entered into an agreement with Butler County where we're now piloting our own center through the Butler County Center. Last year, we served right at forty children through that agreement. It's time for us as a community to develop our own center. You also have a map in your packet, I believe, that shows the communities that do not have a child advocacy center. We are one of a few left in the state that hasn't brought this service directly to our community. So we're ready to do that. At this point, we have a commitment from the Andalucia Regional Hospital. They're providing a space for us on their campus. The City of Andalucia has committed to a fifteen thousand dollar contribution along with the labor for the renovations to the facility. And we've received a small grant from the LifePoint Community Hospitals to contribute to the renovations. And that's what we're here today for, is to seek assistance in completing the project to establish the center. This is our first step, or one of our first steps, is to have the facility here in Covington County. And then we will see it grow over the next few years. And that's very brief. I could talk to y'all about child advocacy centers and child abuse all day, and I know you don't have that time. But do you have any questions for me or Grace?
Ms. Jeter, would you care to comment on this? Aren't you the lead attorney?
Yes, sir. I am. And what I would like to say is that we really need our own child advocacy center here in Covington County. The forty children from Covington County that were serviced last year, the total number of children that the Butler County Child Advocacy Center serviced was sixty-four. And Butler County encompasses, but, well, their jurisdiction encompasses Butler, Crenshaw, and Lambs. And so by ourselves, we utilized almost twice as many of their services. And while certainly working with them is better than what we were doing, we are still not servicing our children as well as we can because we are somewhat limited in that we have to wait until the Butler County people can come to us. And we cannot get the children the treatment and the help and the ability to disclose that they need as soon as we would like to. And so we really need this service here.
My understanding in this group, you've got a board of group-
Yes, sir.
-and DIA office is part of it, Human Resources. Could you go into who was involved with that?
Well, we have, what we have right now is a multidisciplinary team set up. And that is members from the Department of Human Resources, the District Attorney's Office, all the law enforcement agencies in the county, as well as Andalucia Regional Hospital has members on there as well.
Mr. Meeks, you have quite an expense transporting these children to Dethin or to Birmingham, wherever it needs to be for their consultation, do you not?
No, most of the time, the family pays and we don't.
At the time that we were using the Dethin Center, the officers would go to Dethin, investigators would travel separately from the children, but they would go to observe the interviews.
So that would be a savings if we-
Yes, sir.
Any question from members? Well, I'd like to make a recommendation that we fund five thousand in the current physical year and ten thousand for the next physical year to sort it, you know, to get the agency up and running so that we can make the renovations and all. And that's my recommendation to the commission.
Well, I think we should support it any way we can. And I think certainly a need for it. We can't do enough to protect our children and keep them from being victimized for whatever reason. So I would support a move to support them with five thousand dollars, with a ten thousand dollars next year.
Is that in form of a motion?
That would be, yes, sir.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Have a motion, a second. Do we have any other comments? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
I appreciate what y'all do with-
Thank you.
Thank y'all ladies.
Thank you.
I was going to let you sit down after we took action. So we have a motion and a second. Joe, you made a motion. Harold, you second.
Right.
Okay. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, say nay. There being none, the motion carried unanimously. At this time, we are here from Mr. Archie Fuller about a complaint regarding increase in solid waste collection services. Mr. Fuller, is he here? He's not here, but I'm going to ask Mr. Cassidy to just make a brief statement. He's with Allied Waste concerning this last price increase. And I hope you got your underhonor on.
We'll keep it brief, Chairman. The reason we came by last week, I didn't know the meeting had been postponed, but Aaron Green is our operations manager based in Andalucia. He lives in Enterprise, has been there eight years, retired Army, and I wanted to introduce him, but still asked us to address the cons- We've had the contract, as you know, we acquired it from Waste Management almost twenty years ago. And every year, we had a increase based on the Consumer Price Index as the whole index. If you look at the forty-page report that's issued every month by the government, there's an index in there, garbage and trash index. And when I notified y'all last year that we could not renew it, unfortunately, this year, that we would work on a proposal. I explained the price increase based on garbage and trash with the new low emission trucks, with the price of fuel, with the price of tires, with the price of warp and comp and insurance, had far outpaced the rates we were getting every year. So therefore, we responded to a request for proposals that was issued by the county. And understand, we were the only proposer. This is, again, it's an unusual industry, to say the least. You know, we have to service all the citizens countywide, and we appreciate the partnership. And Ms. Petty has my number. If anybody has a question concerning the rate, one thing I would like to do, and I haven't talked to Ms. Petty, the contract and the billing cycle don't coincide. So we sent out a rate to compensate for the third month of this quarter. So people actually got two bills. The last one was, I believe, three dollars and some stuff. We'd like to change, next year, do the rate adjustment to June to coincide with the billing so that there's not two different either rates or two bills. And I'll send you a letter to that. And that will keep it where people know exactly what they're going to be paying for the twelve months.
That means we have to amend the contract at some point. Yeah. Take care of that.
Okay, yes, sir.
Any questions for Mr. Cassidy?
I've got a question and I've talked to him, I've mentioned to him outside, but I've been approached with senior citizen people in the community and the county that might give them, if they would work some way to try to get a discount for the senior citizen folks in Covington County. And Mr. Cassidy said he would try to do what he could to do that. And we appreciate him trying to work with that and helping seniors and citizens.
And it's, again, it's, there's contracts in place that do have that. It's based on an average right now, so, but we'll look into that. It's, you know, any way we can save money, save the citizens money, we'll look into that.
Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir?
Thank you. Appreciate you.
Thank you, Chairman. I've got a meeting in another county, if you'll excuse me.
As we get through with people on the agenda, if you need to leave, feel free.
Well, I'd hate to be rude, but if you'll excuse me, I sure appreciate it.
We all have meetings to go to.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This time, we're here from Ms. Mary Alice Outlaw concerning River Seven Restaurant.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm here regarding the River Seven Bar and Grill. That's been an ongoing issue as they have listed their business Facebook page as a bar and grill. As you may recall, on April sixteenth, the commissioner met with the owner of River Seven Bar, the sheriffs, and representative from the ABC Board regarding the ongoing loud disturbing music and all the problems we've been having up there. Then the residents of Indigo Loop were asked to come meet on April twenty-first with all but one commissioner to inform us of the outcome of that meeting. At this meeting, we were informed that if the owner of River Seven didn't make changes as stated to the commission about the loud, obnoxious music that continued, this commission would red-flag it. They would red-flag their liquor license, asking the ABC Board to review it before renewing it. While I'm here and many others are here to state that the loud music has not changed and, in fact, since April, at times, it's been out of control. And if you check with the sheriff's department, you will see the complaints have continued. Just this weekend, just Friday night, a car left there, a little girl left there and went in the ditch. Saturday night, excuse me, Sunday morning at two, three, and four in the morning, they left River Seven and were in their boat with their loud music, water skiing at four o'clock in the morning. Many residents, I have a petition now signed by many residents from down at the dam, all the way to the beginning of the bridge, that's Dunn's Bridge, where they were out there water skiing, loud music, two and three and four in the morning, Sunday morning. The boat was parked at the bar Sunday morning at seven in the morning, and all the cars were still at the bar. So this has not stopped. This bar moved into where all of our residents live. We all live there. We didn't move there. We've asked and asked and asked, and it hasn't been done. And all I'm asking is, and all the residents would like to know, if this commission did, is going to do as it stated it would and red-flag it and ask for ABC to review their license before it gets renewed. That's what we're asking for. I have a petition from different residents. I will hand to you. I have a copy of it. I also presenting it to ABC Board.
Give it to Ms. Petty. We'll keep it on file.
Yeah. And I'm giving a copy to the ABC Board as well, if they would like a copy. But they, you know, have informed us that the commission needs to do something about this as well and take this into consideration. Thank you.
We thank you for coming and sharing with us. We will take that matter up under item five, under new business. I don't believe I've seen Scott Farmer come in, have we, Ms. Jordan?
No.
So we'll just continue on giving him time to come from Dethin. At this time, we'll go into new business. Need to consider the approval of the May seventh, two thousand fourteen regular meeting minutes.
I so move.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay, there being none, motion carried unanimously. We have been asked to consider a proclamation declaring amateur radio week, June the twenty-third through the twenty-ninth, two thousand and fourteen. If anyone from the amateur radio group wished to address-
Mr. Chairman, Tim Trent from Andalucia, a member of the South Alabama Radio Club. Every year, we have what we call Field Day in ham radio or amateur radio. And that's a weekend designated to conduct radio contacts. We have to operate under emergency procedures that we can't plug into any outlets. We have to operate on battery power, solar power, so forth and so on. And over a twenty-four hour period of time, all amateur radio clubs throughout the United States will be under these emergency procedures and will be making contacts, as many contacts as we can within a twenty-four hour period of time. This will be taking place out at Sweet Home Alabama Park. We invite anyone to come and join us. We get, all this is operated under a point system. We get so many points per proclamation, radio contacts, and so forth. We never win. We spend more time planning our menu that we're going to eat. We believe in having good fellowship and fun while we do it. But ham radio is very active in our county. Anytime there's an emergency, we go into the emergency mode and we offer communications for the county. And whenever there's bad weather, we stay in contact with NOAA Radio in Mobile to give reports. And so we invite everyone out to Sweet Home Alabama. If you've never talked on a ham radio, as long as we're there supervising, you can talk on a ham radio. And I guarantee you, if you come out, you'll get something good to eat.
That sounds like a pretty good deal to me.
Come out and join us.
Do I have a motion that we adopt this proclamation?
I make a motion, we adopt. Second.
All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, nay, there being none, the motion carried unanimously. Next item is amendment to the Classification Pay Plan. As it stands right now, we had a classification that we need to put into two areas of attendance. This is added classification for countywide superintendent. But the plan had been reviewed by the commission.
Yes.
And he has thought of the addition of classification.
I can imagine that's good.
Okay. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay, there being none, motion carried unanimously. Now, the legislature management, they set up a, the chairman, you know, the fair race system, this goes to the full commission for it, has been a amendment. But at this time, I'll ask for the resolution, number fourteen oh six seven two. Have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay, there being none, motion carried. Okay. With the River Seven Restaurant. Just as a background, when we was asked to make a nation of this restaurant, it seems to be that it has become more, did meet and stick with the meeting with the president. Well, it was certain things that I had licked the bottom and I would be done an initial thing when it-
Out there on two or three occasions, and they, obviously a tight fence, but doesn't seem to have solved anything. And I've talked with her on more than one occasion about, and it'd be my recommendation now to the commission that we ask ABC to flag their license for non-renewal pending any changes or something in the format of a restaurant. If she changed to a restaurant and more of a family type restaurant instead of a bar.
Agree with that. I agree with that. You make a motion, I second.
Have a, Ms. Petty?
Oh, no, I was just waiting to see, was there a motion?
Yeah, Joe made the motion.
Well, I would-
And Mr. Elmore?
Second.
Second, that we send a letter to ABC Board asking that their renewal, we start this month, this, their process, that it be flagged until they, there be an investigation and let them return to us as to what they're found. And then we can make a recommendation, either for the license be revoked or continue. And then they will make the decision. We do not make that decision here at the commission.
And I think there's an appeal process and what have you, any of that.
So all in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, nay, there being none, motion carried unanimously. At this time, I'm going to call on our engineer, Mr. Darren Capps, to present a approval of a subdivision.
Yes, sir. I have a subdivision that was submitted. Name of it is Point A, River Camp subdivision. It's located on part of-
I'm sorry you took time to take a seat, but you're not gonna be in the hot seat.
Scott can answer any questions you have on the technicalities of it.
Morning.
Have a good trip, Don.
Yes, sir.
A good evening.
Feel like it sometimes. Uh, I don't know what Don has gone over so far, but um, I think that Debbie is still working on proposal to Forever Wild, um, but I know she's out of the country right now, that's why she couldn't be here today. Uh, but uh, but I know we've discussed some of the, the, the benefits and, and possible liabilities and all before. Um, so, uh, but anyway, I'm here to answer whatever questions we might, might have to, to help and, um, again, I'm, Don, what did you?
Uh, the biggest concern that I have picked up on is property owners. I think there's an assumption that they're gonna get this land back in their name, turn over to them, and address that.
And I'm still not sure what the legal rights are yet, because most of, from what I can tell on the rail maps, uh, most of, um, the rail corridor was, um, actually purchased through deed, uh, back, you know, over a hundred years ago or so. So I'm not too sure what the rights are, you know, if the, the property does, or the rail corridor does revert back to where it's not rail banked anymore, uh, that's still a question to be answered. Uh, I know, you know, normally in the case of it's just an easement, uh, that, that would go back to property owners. In the case of deeded property, I'm not too sure if, if the property, uh, you know, if, if this process does not work out and, and it does not end up being, uh, you know, both parties, uh, decide to, to take away, I guess, that rail bank provision, I'm not too sure still if the railroad own that, since they have a lot of that deed, and I won't, I can't say a hundred percent, but it looks like they have most of that property, especially Covington County, um, uh, they, they have, uh, they own that. I'm not too sure what happens if they still have the right to sell that property, or if it does, uh, sort of act like an easement and all. I'm sure that, that's a more of a legal question on that aspect. Um, but again, uh, as we've discussed before, the, the, the benefit of, uh, if, if Forever Wild would accept the proposal, and of course, that's an if, is, is the fact that that takes a lot of the burden off, uh, the, the local governments, which I know is a big key in terms of, uh, developing, uh, certain areas along the corridor for, uh, facilities, trailhead type facilities and that sort of thing, um, and, and also for maintenance and, and, and some social security issue. And most times in these cases, Forever Wild will work with local, with local entities, uh, to, to make sure, you know, there, there's some things that are taken care of. Um, but again, I, I don't have any, uh, personal experience, you know, that we don't, we've not had this type of instance down here in this area before, which makes it unique for our area. Uh, mo- most cases like this have, have occurred up in, in North Alabama. And overall, it's been a positive experience, but, you know, I can't say, of course, there hasn't been certain issues worked through as well. Uh, and I know, uh, in, in Covington County, uh, you know, part of the corridor especially, um, uh, you know, is not quite on, uh, near the, the, you know, Highway eighty-four and all. Uh, once you get out of op, I know it goes through the woods and all through there, through Babie area, and then, you know, until it crosses back at Sanford. Uh, but, um, but, you know, it's an opportunity. This is not without some, some issues, but that's how most, most opportunities are, so.
Let me ask you a question. As of right now, there is no funding source being approved for the purchase of, of that. Is that correct?
That, that is correct. Well, uh, there, there has been a grant that was, uh, funded, um, I think last year. That would go into possibly a little bit of acquisition for some of that. Um, if, if Forever Wild thing goes through and, and, you know, what happens in that case is they have to purchase, uh, through fair market value and all. There, I know the railroad has already had an appraisal done. I'm sure there'll be some sort of review on, on Forever Wild's side. Uh, hopefully, some of that grant could be converted from an acquisition type process to more development type process for some facilities, uh, but I'm not too sure of the status of, of the grant right now. I know it's still technically open, um, but I don't know what sort of the timing wise on, on that, so.
So right now, Forever Wild is the only potential funded source for the purchase that y'all know of?
No, um, you know, well, you know, the, the local governments could decide to, to band together and, and, and with the help of a grant. I, you know, problem is the grant does not take, uh, does not meet, uh, the, the, the amount the appraisal came in that, that CSX had, had completed. I mean, there's always, you know, a thing to where local governments could band together, form an authority, do it themselves, but probably the most feasible to, to the entities involved in Southeast Alabama would be the Forever Wild proposal.
Yeah, I have some questions, uh, opposed to me by some of the landowners as far as hikers or bike riders or whatever having access to their property of this, you know, are they gonna fence this area in? Are they gonna, are they gonna improve the, the, I guess you call it the base for the trail? Cause I mean, a lot of it's just rocks. Uh, how are they gonna cross these intersections like full lane eighty-four? Is that gonna be a, I mean, you know, when I think they finally burnt the bridge of where P River took them three times, they finally got it burnt down where they couldn't cross it. So, um, I mean, there was just a lot of questions that people have proposed to me that they weren't really in favor of having people having access to the property, cause, you know, some of them, it actually splits their land. They may have a hundred acres with a railroad bed running out through it and a barn and a fish pond or whatever they had, and they're concerned about their liability if somebody gets off on their property. I know that'd actually be trespassing, and I know there's laws to, for that, but still, that is a concern from people I've talked to.
Yeah, my, my conjecture is, is, is that, uh, you know, I don't know if there'd be any public thing that would go into fencing unless there's some sort of safety issue and that sort of thing. It'd probably be the, the private, uh, property owners, um, their, their initiative, if they wanna fence off certain areas or not. Uh, as terms of, of crossings and all, um, you know, I'm guessing there's, there's just gonna, you know, I, I don't know about the bridge, you know, I know that's an issue, and I'm not too sure if that's something that, that would be, uh, addressed in the future or not. And, and, and because it, it is a, a, a liability and maintenance type issue of the P River, um, I'm thinking, you know, most cases like this, those are discussions that are had between Forever Wild stakeholders and local governments during the, during that process. Or what are, there's normally a management plan that's developed, uh, that, that addresses some of these issues, you know, what are our focal points, what are the things we need to address? Um, and, and that's when that sort of come together during that management plan, uh, in order to, I think, to address the issues the best they can as terms of, uh, you know, exact answers, of course, you know, we, we don't have those at this point. Uh, but, but I know that, that management plan, I think, does address some issues as terms of access, um, maintenance, uh, security, uh, enforcement, things like that.
Okay. That's all. Uh, Mr. Clifton?
Yeah, uh, I've worked with Don in, in the, in the group two, uh, on this, and we've been working on it for over a year. Uh, and, uh, it's projects like this that set your community apart. Like we said, there's not any in this part of the world. Uh, this would be the longest rails to trails program in the state, forty-three miles. Uh, the other communities that have, uh, have worked with Rails Trails Program have found it to be a real asset to their community. It does bring in people to the community. Uh, again, uh, when those people come in to the community, they spend their money. When they come into the community, they may like the community, they may come back, they may be, bring business back. Uh, again, these, these are the types of things that makes your community unique, uh, and, and it brings people as a destination rather than just a pass-through point. Uh, Joe, as far as, you know, access, those folks have access now, you know? They have access along that right of way right now. What this will do will, will probably make more control of that access, because you're gonna have folks out there that are responsible folks, uh, and right now, there is no control whatsoever. So, so I, I think it's, it's, it's a project with Forever Wild. It gives us an opportunity to partner with somebody that we could make this happen. What Forever Wild, I think, once, and Don, correct me, uh, they wanna know that the community is behind it. Uh, I know Ops behind it, Andalucia's behind it, uh, and, and I think the commission, uh, you know, I think this is a forward-thinking thing that we need to look at. Uh, there's gonna be issues, but those issues, I believe, can be worked out to the satisfaction of the property owners and the community. I think it's, I think it's a worthwhile project, and it's one we've been working on for a long time, and we'd like to see, uh, see it move forward. Thank you, Mr. President.
Anybody else have any comment? Uh, I recognize Mr. Mount, Councilman from Andalucia.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, uh, you know, Alabama is not a bike-friendly state. Uh, by that, I mean, that's my opinion, but still, we don't have trails like they do in Florida. Alongside the road, they've got paths just for bikers, and this would enhance that program. Alabama was, Andalucia, excuse me, and Covington County was the whole city for the two thousand fourteen Alabama Tandem Weekend. And I had to look that up. Tandem Weekend is like two people riding on a bike. And we were the whole city, that was April third through the sixth. Now, if you get two people on a bike, you know, one person's gotta lead the other one, right? Well, we had one that had three people. Can you imagine what a problem that was trying to get three people going in the same direction? But anyway, we had thirty-three cyclists on fifteen tandem bikes and one triple. Most of them stayed at Holiday Inn Express, most of them ate lunch, most of them bought gas. They adding to our coffers, you know? Being, I'm Kenneth Mount, excuse me, I didn't mean to start talking, but, you know, that's what we thrive on is tax money. And this is extra tax money that's coming in. We had people from Alabama, Florida, Georgia, Indiana, Michigan, Ohio, South Carolina, Tennessee, and Wisconsin. And if you drive from Wisconsin, and I say that sort of funny, but, you know, if you drive from Wisconsin to ride a tandem bike, you're looking for things to do, and these people were. That's what they do, is ride tandem bikes, uh, and they were very complimentary. Our Ms. Gamble is on a Tourism and Relocation Committee, and they are the ones that sort of hosted this event. And it brought these people in, and these people bragged about how beautiful our state was, and they were amazed that they could ride the roads and not feel like they were gonna be run over because of our low traffic. We got a great thing going in our county, a great thing, and let's enhance that, let's bring these people in. And I think we can do this with Rails for Trails. Op Council has passed it, Andalucia has passed it. We look at the industry that it's going to bring in. That's like Op getting a new employer. This would be a new employer for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mount, did you ride on the front or the back of that bicycle?
Well, I couldn't get on it.
Any other comments?
Yes, Chairman, I have a comment. I'd like to thank Mr. Scott for coming and, uh, Mr. Rick, what they said, and Mr. Don and Kenneth for coming and talking. I had some complaints from some landowners, this, this railroad company that go by, they're concerned about people coming in, picking their property stuff up, that's able to tow it off and sell, and I had several calls about that. And I think it's a good thing. I don't have any property that run through, but they, I have had some landowners contact me, and they were opposing of it. And at this time, I'd like to, uh, try to get a hold of, maybe run an ad or something in the paper and get y'all to come back here as well as some landowners, and let y'all enlighten them, what y'all would go intend to do. And maybe it would help the, help the landowners out there understand what's going on. That's, that's what, that's what I feel about, like, say it happened.
You're asking for a public hearing, basically?
Yes, sir, that's what I'm asking for, a public hearing, and that, ask them to come back, and Mr. Scott, and the rest of them come and say what they said today, and if they have any more information, give it to us, and, uh, give the landowners time to, to come and respond to it. I'm not opposed, I thank y'all for coming this morning, I think it's a good thing, but I'd like to be sure we, what we're doing is, is suitable for the landowners that it's going through.
Well, I think if the management plan was in effect, you know, like you discussed, and, and for the security of the, of the riders and the, the property owners, um, and, you know, how they're gonna access and the trails and where, and just a few answers like that, I think the majority of the people that go along with it, I don't think we're gonna have a problem with the landowners just so as explained to them, and they understand exactly what it is. I'm not that familiar with it. I did talk with one of the city councilmen, and he enlightened me some on it, and I actually went online with my limited ability and looked at some of them, and there seems to be a, uh, a niche that we could certainly, uh, use to entice people to come to our community. But I think with a management plan, you know, it would really help everybody understand it better.
Well, that's, we've had, uh, we've had meetings, uh, we've had community meetings, stakeholders meetings over the last year. Uh, and, um, what this is, is my understanding, and I, and I've gotten in late on this, but what my understanding is, this is, this is an idea so we can go to Forever Wild and say, "Look, the community is in favor of this. Let's move forward to do the things that y'all are talking about, to develop a management plan, to develop a development plan, uh, for the trail." So, this is kind of preliminary, cause Forever Wild hadn't decided they're gonna do it. And, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a statement here, Forever Wild probably won't do it unless they think the community is in favor of it. So this is a step to go forward and address these issues, which will be addressed, I'm sure, in other meetings, uh, down the road, so.
It is, and it, it's very important for the city of Op, cause if we're actually speaking to different Forever Wild projects...
Come to the mic, please, so we can, everybody can hear.
This is very important to the city of Op, cause there are two Forever Wild projects that we're talking about. One that is already in the works, it has been approved for the four hundred acres, in addition to the state park. And the access to that land is through the old railroad property. And the, the prop, surrounding property owners don't own this property, the railroad owns it, and they need to, to understand that. Uh, but I don't think it'll be a problem with the management plan, with control, and the people that I've seen that hike. Uh, it's, it's a different group of people there. Lack of a better term, tree huggers. Uh... But, the, the Forever Wild project in Op, the four hundred acres, is dependent on the approval of this, because we, we have included that in, in the program, so it, it, it has a, a major impact on what Op is doing. Uh, I'd just like you to be aware of that, that there, there are a lot of people involved on the other side of it as well.
Yes. Oh, I think the public will be behind it once they understand it, that, you know, there's just a lot of questions that, that we don't have that to, and also you don't, but I'm certainly in favor of doing anything that would, uh, would improve our community. And I think that, um, we'd support going forward with it, once we get, or go far with it to the point we could get some additional information without, you know?
Be glad to help you anyway.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me make these comment. We, we, we're going to have a special call meeting next Wednesday. Our next regular meeting is the ninth of July, I believe. So whatever we do today should be, I think should be in the context of those two time frames, so we can make a disposition. If we're going to have a public hearing, we will need to advertise that, is that, not correct, Ms. Petty?
Yes, yes.
And probably need... Yes, would please come to the phone, I mean, yeah, the phone, it's been a long, long week already.
My name is Gayle Warwick, and I agree with the gentleman who had been saying these are good projects. They will enhance, um, Andalucia and the surrounding area, and get more people to come for good causes. But, uh, I just, this opens the door for me to say something about being outside in nature and the beauty of our area. I moved here ten years ago. I had been embarrassed for my company to come here and see the way trash is everywhere on our road sides. Nobody picks it up, nobody seems to care. It's somebody else's problem, and yet you go to Walton County, which is where I'm from, you don't see any trash. You have to turn, come into Covington County, and the roads... But I'm just saying, these people who are gonna be on the biking trails are gonna bring trash in unless somebody does something. I just would ask that some of you commissioners get together, and please, let's do something about the trash around Andalucia.
Well, that's another issue that, uh, we've, we've got ongoing discussion with that.
This is also involved in that, because these people are gonna be riding the roads, riding, uh, up and down the highways, and they will be adding trash if there are no trash, trash collectors anywhere. So that needs to be considered, in my opinion.
That would be in the management plan, wouldn't it, Scott?
Okay, thank you.
I mean, that's, that's the importance of the management plan, and in order to get there, you gotta do some preliminary steps in order to get the people together to draw up that management plan, and I assume, Mr. Foreman, that we will have an opportunity to make input into that management plan.
Mr. Chairman, from what I understand, yes, that, that is a, a very well-vetted process that allows Forever Wild stakeholders and local stakeholders to come together again to discuss a lot of these issues that we've discussed today, because, you know, every piece of property, every project they have is a little bit different. You know, they all have the same core function, core goal, to protect, um, you know, important properties in state of Alabama, but, but overall, the, the actual function and, 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 and local elements of those projects are a little bit different. So, from what I understand, the past cases, that yes, the public's involved, local officials are involved to discuss a lot of these access issues, future maintenance issues, capital needs, that sort of thing, so, um... Yes, sir, ba- basically, that, that management plan, I think, would address a lot of those issues, and sort of come together to say, "All right, what resources and from what areas are able to, to utilize to, to the management of, of that area?"
So i- if the commission approved a resolution to support, this would just be to get the process moving along, and there'd be checks and balances throughout this process, so if there's objections, then, then they could be worked out?
Yes, sir, that is what we understand. Uh, right now, what, what, what we've tried to do with this process is just try to get local support, just so Forever Wild can see these areas, these areas support to this process. And even that don't necessarily mean it's gonna happen. Uh, I'm, I'm sure the other pro- Don speak more for the other process and all, but it's a long-term process, there's a lot involved, there's a lot of discussion, and right now, that, that's what's basically been asked for, is just support to show that, you know, pretty much nearly every local government along this corridor is in favor, uh, and, and hopefully Forever Wild would, you know, smile favorably on that, and then, again, that's a long process, once that started, in terms of getting everything involved, getting everything ready for that transfer over to them, and, and what's gonna happen in the area in the future.
You've heard the pre- uh, presentation, what is the pleasure of the commission? I would make a motion that we adopt the resolution and support it pending the management plan and all, cause all it's doing is saying that we're actually going along with, in favor of it, without, with the limited information that we have. So I would make a motion to accept this resolution. You have a second?
I'll second, Chairman.
Have a motion, and so, any other comments? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. There being none, motion carried. Okay. Any comments from the board? Commission members? We could've kept y'all here for another ten items, but we put them on the meeting for next week. We, we have several items that, things, by changing the date of the monthly meeting, it sort of put us a further interval, and we had a lot of items that came up this week. So be looking forward to your email for the meeting for next Wednesday, and it'll be about this many items next week that we've got here. I just want to mention about the, um, the garbage, uh, situation. Hopefully, the people will understand and go back and look at the economics of it. Um, when we took the bids, the first of May, our contract was running out, the end of May, we had to make a decision, or we would be inundated with garbage, with no way to pick it up, and so we made a decision which we felt was the best for all citizens' concern. Mr. Scott, any other, uh, Mr. Barton, you have anything else?
I don't...
Mr. Almore?
I'd like to say something to people about concern, that about the garbage pickup, and I told them, there's nobody, they, this is on for company to bid on it, so we didn't have any other, we done behind, and we didn't have any other way to go, but go without the company to bid on. We sent out the bids, nobody bidded on it, so, you know, we, that's what we had to take.
Mr. Turner?
I was gonna comment that, um, I'm sure a lot of us in this room was, uh, in the, uh, area where we had to just do with garbage the best we could, and now we've got a, a pickup service, and of course, it costs me just as much as it does anybody else. Uh, and I'm willing to pay for them fellers to pick it up, cause, um, I can roll it out by the road, and they pick it up and carry it off, and I don't have to worry about it. That I like.
In other words, you don't have to find a disposal there?
No, sir, no, sir, and before, it was kinda rough, you know, you had to burn your paper and do what you could or you can, buried a lot of stuff, uh, done the best you could. Uh, I'd like to make a comment too about the, about the, and I'd like for the engineer to chime in. Uh, this young lady concerned about the garbage on the side of the roads. I appreciate her concern, I'm concerned too. Uh, I pick up garbage on my road and, uh, put it in a bag and put it in my trash can. Uh, it, it kinda disappoints me that a lot of people just rides by and just throws out garbage, just, I see sacks from everywhere, Hardee's, McDonald's, well, that's people coming from town where they got something to eat, and they just throw their bag out on the road, and, you know? I keep a trash bag in my truck, in my car, I fill it up, when it gets full, I put it in my trash can, I put another one back there. But a lot of folks don't do that, they just throw down, and we're doing the best we can. Am I right, Mr. Keps?
Yes, sir.
We've got some folks hard, so, we, we used to use, uh...
We used to have inmates.
Inmates, we can't get them to move, so we had to harp people.
We hired some, uh, temporary employees, and last month, we picked up a hundred and forty-one bags of garbage on the roadside. I got a list of the roads, if you wanna know where they picked up, but, uh, you know, you can pick it up this week, next week, it looks like you didn't pick it up, but that's got... Well, that's a law, you know, no littering, and I think most people know that, but...
You know, we might want to consider some kind of program whereby, like, Connecticut County, they have a, things that don't drop it on Ki- Connecticut County, you know?
I mean, we can buy signs, if you don't want to throw something...
I'm just saying, you can look at all that...
Let me say, Connecticut County has the signs, they still got the trash.
Picking up trash is like cutting grass, that's what I'm going...
They still got the problem.
Can I make one comment? I adopted a road, outlawed, it is adopted a mile on Sandy Landing, and every Saturday and Sunday, my husband and I walk to pick up trash, excuse me, pick up trash.
That's dual, that's, that's what I call dual benefits.
We pick up a lot of trash. We, we take bags and beer cans mainly, but we do pick up REs and all kinds of, uh, stuff, so we, we do it every Saturday and Sunday. We're all welcome to come out. We have a boat landing, and Mr. Barton knows, we're pretty familiar with that, we have a boat landing over there. Trash comes out of those boats every day, so that's another issue, that we have to pop trash.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Almore, do you have anything?
No, sir, I do not.
I guess we hit the clear from the local standpoint, right?
So far.
So far. Mr. Keps, you have anything else?
No, sir.
Ms. Petty, you have anything? Any other staff member have anything? With that being said, I will entertain a motion that be adjourned.
I so move, Chairman.
All in favor, stand.
I'll second.